Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Everyone, welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting on Wednesday, September 21st at 9:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here and call the meeting to order. First, we're going to -- we do actually have Commissioner Hagan on the way, so we don't need to do roll call, but he will be here shortly. With that, we're going to have the pledge and the invocation, and I'd like to recognize Commissioner White to provide that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the outstanding citizens that are here with us today to be recognized, and as always, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county. I also pray for our armed forces and our first responders, pray that you will guide them, keep them safe each and every day. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that. We have an exciting day today. We've got some excellent opportunities to celebrate, and with that, I'd like to first recognize Commissioner Smith, that will present a very special award. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Thank you, and good morning. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the recipient of the 2021 Hillsborough County Community Water Wise Award. This recognition was delayed due to COVID, and we are happy to be able to present it today. For over 20 years, the Community Water Wise Award Program has recognized attractive water-conserving landscapes at homes, businesses, industries, or governments that protect the environment. The County and Tampa Bay Water sponsor this award, which is administered by the Hillsborough County Extension. The winning landscapes have coupled attractive design with Florida-friendly landscaping, as well as irrigation systems or techniques that minimize water waste. Today, I am pleased to announce the 2021 Hillsborough County Winning Landscape belongs to Beth Alence of Lithia. Is Beth here today? Oh, there. Thank you. Please join me at the podium. And I would also like to invite Hillsborough County Extension Director Stephen Grand and Extension's Florida-friendly landscaping agent Lynn Barber to join us. Good morning.
Good morning.
Beth previously won this award in 2015, and her landscape continues to improve each year. She uses minimal potable water. Her favorite plants include coonti, caladium, and laurel petalum. Okay, just checking. Here is an amazing water conservation fact. Beth has not used her in-ground irrigation system for at least a year.
Over.
Over a year. She handwaters a few plant pots, but nothing else. And with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Lynn Barber to tell us more about Beth's winning landscape. Lynn.
Thank you. So, the stepping stone award was created by an artist at the request of Tampa Bay Water. It is beautiful, it is heavy, but it is magnificent. So, it is a new design this year, and I think it's even more gorgeous than it was before. And I can say the very same thing about Beth's landscape. When she won before, it was magnificent, and now it's even better. So, Beth, would you like to say something about your landscape?
Just thank you. Thank you. I had to stop watering. A truck ran over my irrigation system the day --
Come along here, too, the microphone.
The day I got the award, and I didn't have time to fix it, and I haven't watered since. And I haven't lost any plants, and I still have to weed. Thank you.
And Mr. Grand?
Sure. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Stephen Grand, County Extension Director. I just want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their continued support of all of our extension programs and for recognizing this award annually. In addition, I want to thank Tampa Bay Water for their award sponsorship and our Public Utilities Department for their continued cooperation. And again, congratulations, Beth.
Well, congratulations, Beth, on your outstanding work. And Stephen and Lynn, we all very much appreciate your efforts you put into saving water in our county and everything else you do in the extension service for us. Thank you so much. And I love that award. That's really lovely, and you'll be able to use it in your landscape.
Everybody should get one.
Everybody should get one. So, we can take a few photos.
While we gather here, I just want to say thank you to all of you. We are making a significant difference in Florida by highlighting Florida-friendly landscaping. It saves water, it saves landscaping cost, actually, and it actually saves a significant amount of money to not only the county, but also specifically to the residents that are able to develop a strategy. In addition to that, the work that the two of you do, Lynn and Stephen, in helping create the grant program to assist in covering the cost of landscaping for new developments, to make sure that we're using good development that actually allows that landscaping to exist. And then the work, Lynn, that you do with community gardens all around the county in partnership with our schools is a great way of helping people recognize that their environment is something that's so valuable and important, and when we do it right, it saves us all money. So, thank you so very much. Come on up.
And a fast --
Commissioner Kemp.
I'll just say, thank you for the pictures. They're lovely and beautiful, and there was a time, I think, when people thought native planting was not attractive, or, you know, just wasn't beautiful to the eye, and it's just beautiful to have this demonstrated. And all the time, everybody can just be -- look at your home and see such beauty.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's do a picture with your board up here.
Thank you so very much. I really, truly appreciate it. We -- our next one is very exciting as well. We've been working for a while to continue to bring this forward and bring this issue forward, and I'm so thrilled that the county has had an opportunity to partner with a great organization. Commissioner Kemp is presenting accommodation to Bible-Based Fellowship Church. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And welcome to everyone here this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Would the Reverend Dr. Anthony C. White, pastor of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church, Antoinette Davis, Director of Justice Ministry of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church, and the rest of their party, please join me here at the podium? And what wonderful shirts. Good morning to everyone. Welcome, and I'm so pleased that you could be here. I'm excited to recognize a Bible-Based Fellowship Church whose membership has made tremendous strides in raising awareness about the importance of diversity and inclusion. Two years ago, they played a significant role in Hillsborough County's ongoing efforts to promote unity and equity, and this commendation further illustrates the impact Bible-Based Fellowship Church has made in this community. And they've certainly -- you've been very, very impactful, and we've seen a lot of change and growth in the last couple of years. The commendation reads, and it's being held by my aide Laura Lawson, who's been very involved in this effort as well. The Hillsborough County -- the commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the Bible-Based Fellowship Church for promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community. Led by Pastor Anthony C. White, members of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church worked together with other community members to support a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis," which was passed by the Board of County Commissioners on September 16th, 2020. Members of the church continued to participate and strengthen the county's accomplishments in promoting diversity. Courtesy of the church's efforts, the county has conducted an equity profile, enacted a tenants' bill of rights, created an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and appointed Cheryl Howell to fill the newly-created post of Assistant County Administrator for Equity and Community Impact, and that will have impacts for, I can say, generations to come. The Bible-Based Fellowship Church has been instrumental for its significant, ongoing efforts to promote a vision for a fairer, stronger, and more equitable Hillsborough County. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the Bible-Based Fellowship Church and wishes them much continued success in future endeavors awarded this 21st day of September 2022. And Laura, if you could just bring those awards forward. Thank you. And I'm pleased to present copies of this commendation to Reverend Dr. -- I'm sorry, to Reverend Dr. White. Oh, there we are. I have to find everybody here. As well as Director Davis, Antoinette Davis.
Thank you.
As well as Dr. Sheila Simmons Tribble. And here we go, right behind -- directly behind me. And widow of Ike Tribble, who many of us know, his social justice warrior legacy that has been tremendous for -- or had been for decades in this community. As well as, we have Adonis Miles, who is here to receive it on behalf of Darrell Robinson, who is unable to attend today. Great. Thank you all. And with that, we'll have Pastor White. Would you like to say a few words?
Sir. Good morning, and thank you to the Honorable Commissioner Pat Kemp and other distinguished members, county commissioners. I want to just thank you on behalf of Bible-Based Fellowship Church for recognizing the work and for the work that the county is doing and that you're doing in addressing this issue. One of my favorite quotes, James Baldwin says, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." And I wish to commend the Board of County Commissioners for facing this issue and -- as well as partners in the community, and as we continue to work together collectively to not only name this as an issue, to face it, but to find solutions collectively that will bring -- promote health and healing in our community. So, thank you, and I will turn it over to our Director of Justice Ministry, Ms. Antoinette Davis.
Good morning, and again, I say thank you to you, Pat Kemp, and the board, for this great award. I am honored to be a part of a community that continues to envision the change that we want to see, and we have a great team at Bible-Based Fellowship Church that helps me to lead the justice ministry, so I have to give a huge thank you to our team. Back on September 16th in 2020, when the resolution passed, there were only a handful of counties who had passed a resolution. This is a growing movement. Over 95 counties now have a resolution. Hillsborough and Manatee are among those counties. And the CDC, American Medical Association, American Public Health Association, and many health systems have now declared racism as a public health crisis. So, board, this is a great thing that we have done. In fact, Hillsborough has gained national attention for the work that we are doing. All eyes are on Hillsborough. I believe situating racism as a public health crisis paves the way for us to begin to do the hard work to move towards equity and health equity. So, again, I want to thank you for this commendation today, and let's continue to do great work in our county. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you to everyone, and I don't know, do we have any remarks by board members?
I would actually love to be able to say a few words. I want to thank all of you. Bible-Based has been one of the, in my opinion, one of the best partners we've had to reach out to communities, to talk to communities, to work with communities on finding solutions for communities, as well as to help us in developing public policy that supports the efforts to address the fact that racism is still unfortunately alive in our communities, and we have to use policy and partnership to be able to address those issues and help open eyes and hearts to take care of the people in our community. The good news is, we're making good progress. Today, on the consent agenda, is an edit to our tenant bill of rights that includes a contact with the Florida Department of Health to address issues associated with safe housing for the people that live in our community that may not be experiencing equity in their relationships, in their housing. So, you have made a significant difference to many in our community, and I look forward for continued partnership in making sure that we are taking care of the residents in Hillsborough County, raising the awareness of what racism does to harm communities and families, as well as making sure that we're making Hillsborough the best county in the country to live in, because you have helped us make that happen. So, thank you so very, very much for all of your work. I really appreciate it. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Smith.
Good morning, and I want to just thank you all for your leadership in our community and your work. It takes work to bring us together in the way that you have and you are, bringing people together with their local government, bringing people together in small groups where we've been able to discuss the beginnings of this movement and where do we go from here. This declaration of racism as a public health crisis was an excellent first step that we can all be proud of, and thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for bringing that forward in the beginning. But it's something that our whole community can be very proud of, as you noted, that it is a growing movement, but I am proud and pleased that we're at the forefront of it, thanks to your efforts and your willingness to work with a broader and broader group here in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much, and I'm glad to see you taking this well-deserved award this morning.
Thank you.
And with that, if we can all move to the front.
Come this way, and we'll take a good photo. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the recipients. Thank you for all the great work that you do in Hillsborough County to continue to make Hillsborough County the best county in the nation, and I, like I said, I can't thank you enough. With that, we will move to the agenda, and I will recognize Ms. Wise to review any changes or any addendums.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have a few off-the-agenda items. The first one is Item B3. This is to approve letters of agreement, LOAs, with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, known as ACHA, for participation in the direct payment program, which provides supplemental payments from the federal governments to eligible hospitals that provide Medicaid-managed care recipients in an amount not to exceed $102,837,781. Item B4 is to approve agreements with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration for participation in the low-income pool, disproportionate share, and related intergovernmental transfer programs in the amount not to exceed $35,312,911.53. We have Item F1 by Commissioner Hagan, is to amend the board action on the changes to the agenda, which is approved at the September 13th, 2022 land use meeting, to amend the continuance dates for certain applications from December 13th, 2022, B OCC land use meeting, to have those items rescheduled for the November 3rd, 2022, B OCC land use meeting. We have one item that is deferred. It is Item A50, which is the approved, the third modification to the agreement with Paradigm Software LLC for the Solid Waste Integrated Management Department. That item is deferred to October 6th. We have several public hearings. The first one is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the proposed draft amendment to the Hillsborough County ordinance concerning the Northdale Special Dependent District. Item D2 is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportion share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Fishhawk West Investments for the Hawks Fern Phase IV project to satisfy school concurrency. Item D3 is to hold a public hearing to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase IV of the community investment tax. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you.
Move the changes.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Myers and Kemp. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried at seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are, as soon as I figure out where I am, we're at the public comment section of our meeting, and this gives the public an opportunity to participate in our meetings, in addition to proclamations and wonderful celebrations. The board welcomes a comment from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board of Directors, I mean, Board of -- Board members, rather. However, it is requested at the same time that when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board and members of the public. The board has set aside 45 minutes, period in the morning, immediately following the changes for public comment, and at the discretion of the chair, should we have more individuals signed up than at that time allowed, the board may hear public comment at the end of the meeting as well. For anyone that wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting, may do so by completing the online public comment forum found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open to the public for sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. An option is also available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person when you sign up. You may also sign up in person on the day of the meeting in the lobby of the Frederick B. Carl County Center, located at 601 East Kennedy Boulevard in downtown Tampa. Assistants will be made available onsite between 8:30 and 9:00 a.m. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online forum, an audio call-in number will be provided so that you are able to participate in the meeting. All speakers are required to provide their name and email address and telephone number on the online forum. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comment close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The chair will call on the speakers by name in the order of which their requests to speak have been received. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis, and the boardroom seating is now at 85 visitors for special recognition, public comment, and viewing. If capacity is met, overflow will be accommodated on the first-floor multipurpose room. Face coverings are also strongly encouraged, although not required. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the chair by name. Each speaker is offered three minutes in order to participate in the meeting. And with that, I have six speakers, seven speakers, actually. One is actually signed up for public, a public hearing, and will be called during the time for the public hearing. The first speaker that is participating virtually is speaking on Item G2, and that's Isabel Tassi.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to request that you please ban the retail sale of rabbits with no grandfather clause. A few months ago, during the Easter season, I went to a few local pet shops to see their rabbits. Two stores in particular had very small, young-looking rabbits. When I asked the sales clerk at both stores, they mentioned the rabbits were just four weeks old. It's my understanding it's not even legal to sell them before eight weeks of age. Additionally, on other occasions, I've seen pet rabbits dumped at city parks. Many people make impulse purchases and do not realize the rabbits are high maintenance, and they chew through everything in the home, electrical wires, furniture, clothing, et cetera. Most people are simply not equipped to deal with this and end up dumping them in a public location. We are in the 21st century. Our laws need to reflect that. Please enact a ban on the retail sale of rabbits in the county with no grandfather provision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person is Tom Atterhold, who's speaking on A4. Welcome, Mr. Atterhold.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, county administrator, and county attorney. It is so good seeing everyone in person finally again. I'm here as chair of the Veteran Park and Museum Board, and the reason I came is to compliment everyone involved. The pass out you are getting, the handout you are getting, is a chronological timeframe for all the major events in our park, and you will see that is extensive, beginning in 1986. The item on the consent agenda is an approval of a grant of $1.65 million from Department of Economic Opportunity to put in addition onto our existing facility in the park. It is the next phase of a multi-phase facility construction program that we'll all be very, very, very proud of as it continues to evolve. And I just want, I just want everyone here to recognize the -- here to recognize the importance, and the public, please, the importance that the spot that our veteran park holds not only in our memories, but also our futures. We are building the future in that campus. So we're going to reach out to a whole bunch of stakeholders that have never been reached out to. There are nine major types of stakeholders involved. The park has actually developed its own ecosystem, and within that ecosystem are powerful stakeholders, powerful benefactors, and contributors to our society, economy, and our local development, economic development. The park's in a very special little spot out there. It's at the apex or the intersection of I-4, I-75, and 301. It's never been branded. We would love to brand the area as the Military Mile. Keep that in mind as we go forward. It's also the western terminus of the Florida High Tech Corridor that hardly anyone knows exists. It's a big deal. Also, we have the Space Coast coming back to our territory, to the Bay Area. We are home to a huge cadre of defense contractors, for instance, who support a military and a local economy. So there's a lot of good stuff going on in our campus. And I just want everybody to know that what you're going, you're going to approve on the consent agenda, Item A4, is a huge deal for the development of the campus. And with that said, I would love to entertain any thoughts, notions, or whatever you want to do right now. If not, please, please, the handout I gave you is your keepsake. Please take it home, frame it, because you are responsible. This Board of County Commissioners began this March in 1986, and it continues.
Thank you, Mr. Aderhold. Thank you. I happen to agree. It's one of my favorite parks, so I think we're good.
What do you mean, one of your most favorites?
Well, I got a lot of favorite parks in Hillsborough County. We have a lot of jewels here, and this is one of them for sure.
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
The next speaker signed up to speak is Renee Rivard, who's in person on G2.
Hello, Commissioners. Renee Rivard, PO Box 81 Cortez, Florida 34215. You have been getting emails from me for about a year now explaining the unwanted pet rabbit issue. I just want to run through the reasons why Hillsborough County should implement a retail ban on domestic rabbits. First and foremost, you can easily break a rabbit's back by handling them improperly, and if stressed, rabbits can easily have heart attacks and die. Rabbits are bought mostly at Easter as impulse buys. It's hard to tell the sex of a rabbit, and many times, they are sold in pairs. By state law, rabbits have to be eight weeks old before they can be sold at pet stores. I have personally seen pet stores with rabbits as young as five weeks old. Pet store employees across Tampa Bay agree rabbits are an Easter impulse buy and know they end up at rescues and dumped outdoors. Petco and Petsmart do not sell rabbits. Rabbits are expensive. They have to go to veterinarians who specialize in rabbits. Rabbits cannot be left in a cage. They need lots of room for exercise. They chew on everything, and when going through puberty, can urinate all over the house. The unwanted pet rabbit issue is a big problem all across Florida. We have been sending statistics almost every month to you. There are very few rabbit rescues in Florida, and all of them are overwhelmed and financially strapped. Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue in Pasco is easily turning away 20 rabbits a month. The Humane Society here in Tampa is turning away an average of seven rabbits a month. They have now taken in over 170 rabbits this year. Last year, they took in 260 rabbits, and it cost them $40,000 just to spay and neuter them. I repeat, it cost them $40,000 just to spay and neuter them. Hillsborough County taxpayers footed $20,000 of that bill. That alone should prompt you to enact a ban. But wait, there's more. Rabbits that are turned away from rescues are getting dumped outside where they don't know how to find food, water, or shelter. They become easy prey and get hit by cars and die out in the heat. Then there is the deadly RhDv2 rabbit virus that the Florida Department of Agriculture is on high alert for. Pet store rabbits bring in the virus from other states and other countries. This virus could wipe out our entire wild rabbit population. There has already been four confirmed cases in domestic rabbits in Florida. And I will let your animal control staff tell you how hard it is to catch a rabbit. It took them a day and a half to catch two. Pasco County will vote on a rabbit retail ban next month. DeSoto County, Orange County, Martin County, Key West, and the State of California all ban the sale of rabbits. Please do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker that signed up to speak is speaking virtually, Donna Grace. Is Donna Grace available to speak on Item G2?
Hello. Good morning. My name is Donna Grace, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to the issue of banning the sale of bunnies in the county. Bunnies are very popular when they're young, especially at Easter time, but so many of them are given up to the shelters that they are full to capacity and can't take anymore. Some people do not bother turning them into a shelter and simply let them loose. Not only is that terrifying for the bunny, but people who find them and want to help have trouble finding a shelter that would take them. The cost of feeding and caring for these bunnies is, of course, on the shelter, but there is an additional cost of neutering and spaying them, which must be borne by the shelters or by the county as well. It's a very difficult situation, and it can be helped by banning the sale of bunnies in pet stores. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker signed up to speak is Willa Pedersen, who's here in person, speaking on A1. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning to the Board of Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. What I want to speak on is respect and safety for the homeless. On my many walks in one area, I have gotten to know the people who are homeless along the blocks where I walk. I've gotten to know them by name. Mr. Ford had not been there for quite some time, and so I asked Mr. Robinson, "What happened to Mr. Ford? Where is he?" Mr. Robinson, who is in a wheelchair, told me, "The police beat him up." And I said, "What do you mean, the police beat him up?" He said, "Well, Mr. Ford was staying under the viaduct, and the police told him to leave." Well, Mr. Ford went across the street. The police came back again and told him to leave. Well, Mr. Ford said, "Well, I don't understand why I have to leave. I fought in the Vietnam War. I have a right to be on the street." Well, I was told that that police officer went and got two more police officers, and they beat Mr. Ford so badly that he had to be transported, transported in an ambulance. I don't know if Mr. Ford is still alive today. Now, I agree, and first of all, I know that Mr. Ford does not bother anybody. I've been walking down there for over a year, and Mr. Ford always stays by himself under the viaduct. Now, I am in all agreement with affordable housing. I think that's a wonderful stance and a thing to do. But I also agree that no one should be homeless. No one should be homeless, and if they are, they should be protected and respected. I'd like to know what we can do about that. And I do say "we" because I'm a part of this as well. What can we do to find housing for the homeless? And until the housing is given to them, what can we do to respect and protect them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pedersen. And I encourage anyone that finds someone in that particular situation to contact our office, because we will bring resources available to that individual. The next speaker is Anne Marie Cancio. Cancio, I'm sorry if I messed that up. My apologies. In person, speaking on G2.
Pretty close. Cancio. Good job, Cancio. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Anne Marie Cancio, and I reside at 17802 Ridgway Court in New Tampa. While I have been involved in cat rescue in the county for years now with Cat Crusaders and Cat Haven, in all honesty, I don't know much about rescuing rabbits. Nevertheless, I am here today out of respect and solidarity with my colleagues who do know something about rabbits and who volunteer countless hours of their time and personal financial resources in rabbit rescue. When these volunteers state that they are absolutely overwhelmed with rabbits who have been surrendered or dumped by owners who no longer want them or who can no longer care for them, I believe them. And I believe that today, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners has a historical opportunity to drastically change this situation and to ease the plight of rabbit rescues and the staggering number of abandoned rabbits in their charge by approving a county ordinance to ban the retail sale of rabbits. I urge you to give rabbits the same protection and mercy that you extended to dogs and cats when this body took action to ban the retail sale of dogs and cats in 2020. And if anyone wants to get a pet rabbit in this county, there are plenty of rescued rabbits that now need loving homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker that's not speaking at a public hearing is Ms. Connie Burton. Ms. Burton, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I would just like to thank all of you as a body for moving forward with the resolution that racism is a health crisis. And beyond that, to further encourage you to move with jet-lightened speed so we can start dealing with this issue in ways that move beyond just being a mere resolution. Inside of this beautiful county and city, the issues that was exposed as a direct result of COVID has revealed that we are still plagued with so many systematic problems as it relates from housing to employment, and how those that were the first, the last hired and the first fired is having an ongoing effect. In our community, we must be able to shed some light of hope, and I am in true just awe that someone, that Ms. Howell, Cheryl Howell, has been able to be elevated to the point where she can share a few glaring lens on this whole issue as it relates to all county issues. And so as we move forward, again, for the church and its leadership there for being able to take on this issue where many are too afraid to attack, and for your leadership as Commissioners, that I know most all of you that I don't think you really needed to resolve, because when I've needed you, when I've needed you, Commissioners, that you have been responsive. So thank you again for all of your work, and let us continue to move so we can resolve this issue and the next generation can see that on our watch, we didn't allow it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. I, too, celebrate Ms. Howell. She's my partner in crime and, no, in hope, partner in hope. And it's very exciting to see how the county is responding to what we've chosen to acknowledge and recognize and work on. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I do not have any-
I'd just like to respond.
Okay. And we, I don't have anybody else who spoke to public comment. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just thank you, Ms. Burton, for those words. I think that put it well. But I'd also like to just recognize the leadership of our county administrator in taking that role to appoint Ms. Howell and set up that position to be such an important and high-ranking position. And I think that, as Ms. Burton said, putting a lens on equity throughout everything we do in the county. And so I think that that was a real response to the community and our active leadership of our county administrator. So I just would like to acknowledge Bonnie Wise as well.
Ms. Wise? You're welcome. Okay, as I was saying, that is our last public speaker, other than a speaker that signed up at the public hearing for D3. I would like to entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Shall move.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is. And we have a second by, let me see, a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner White. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith. My apologies. My brain's on Rover Drive right now. And with that, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We have another 15 minutes before our time's certain, so we can probably go to the regular agenda. Ms. Wise?
Yes, ma'am. That is, we'll go to Item B1, and the first item is a contract for sale for some ELAP property, and Forest Turberville will present this item to you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. Forest Turberville Conservation Environmental Lands Management. The item before you today is broken down into two parts. The first is to request that you approve by a supermajority vote a contract for sale and purchase of real property in the amount of $1,660,000 with Cecil Busby Farms Incorporated for approximately 78.97 acres located adjacent to the Upper Little Manatee River Preserve through the J&amp;K Platt ELAP Program. The second request is that you approve a budget amendment resolution to realign $325,000 within the ELAP Bond 2019 Fund currently budgeted in the ELAP Acquisition Project to the ELAP Restoration CIP Project for the purposes of restoring the property's upland habitats and also demolition of nonessential structures. The property is contiguous to other county-owned ELAP properties located within the Upper Little Manatee River Preserve and provides a great opportunity to expand the boundaries of the preserve. The negotiated purchase price is the higher of two independent appraised values, but is less than the seller's asking price of $2 million. The contract includes an agreement for placement of a permanent recognition marker, which memorializes Mr. Cecil Busby's prior ownership, and also a pro-rata acreage adjustment applied after a final due diligence survey is completed. ELAP bonds will fund the $1,660,000 purchase price, transactional costs up to $50,000, and restoration costs up to $325,000. Additional annual operating costs are estimated at $3,000 and can be accommodated within the current ELAP management budget. This action does not increase the current budget for the ELAP acquisition or ELAP restoration accounts, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move approval?
We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? That, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is for our 911 upgrade system. And Eric Sumner with Performance Data and Analytics is here, although I did not think he was going to be here today, because he's got a new addition to his family soon. And then Anthony Camarano, who's our 911 manager, will present these items, this item.
Excellent.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Oh, and congratulations on the way.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad I could make it today. We're still a few days out, hopefully. But, good morning, Eric Sumner, Performance Data and Analytics. Item B2 is to approve and execute the sixth modification agreement with Vesta Solutions Incorporated for continued ongoing and as needed, Vesta 911 upgrades for the Performance Data and Analytics Department at an additional total cost of $8,156,956. This additional total cost represents a per-year software maintenance savings in year one of $581,750.38. That's because of the grant we're going to explain a little bit later. It's an increase in years two to five from $1,577,000 to $1,211,000, which will be $615,449 over four years. So in addition, that $2.8 million grant we received a couple of board meetings ago, that is included in a total of $8.1 million. It's grant-funded and will allow the Requesting Department, PDNA, to upgrade and refresh all the existing hardware and software for the county's entire 911 call handling equipment and the network. At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Anthony Camarano, the manager of 911, to show you a quick map, a quick slide, to sort of provide context of what this means with the 911 program. So Anthony and James, if you could please start the PowerPoint.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Anthony Camerano, 911 manager of the 911 Administration. Not everyone knows this about our county.
We need a little assistance on the display, sir. There we go. Thank you.
Not everyone knows this about our county, but we have nine 911 Public Safety Answering Points, also known as PSEPs, in our county. We have seven primary PSEPs and two secondary PSEPs. Primary PSEPs, like the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and Tampa PD, are the first point of contact someone will reach if they dial 911. A secondary PSEP, like Hillsborough County Fire Rescue and Tampa Fire Rescue, will only have 911 calls transferred to them from a primary PSEP. This is a map of our PSEP locations. As you can see from the stat shown, 832,849 911 calls have been taken in this county so far this fiscal year, with Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office taking the most calls, with 468,569 calls, and Tampa PD found right behind them, taking 319,505. Out of all those calls, 192,378 calls were transferred to secondary PSEPs. Some of the ways we support our PSEPs are through text 911 services, establishing backup 911 call centers, the implementation of advanced cybersecurity solutions, direct management of all our contracts, and the call handling equipment refresh, which includes a replacement of servers, switches, routers, firewalls, monitors, and desktop computers. With that, Eric will finish the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Commissioners, this item authorizes procurement services to renew the contract for an additional five-year period through the end of 2027. Anthony mentioned the hardware and software upgrades. A notice of intent to sole source was properly posted, and no challenges were received. In the original award, and with regard to this modification, there are no subcontracting opportunities for certified disadvantaged minorities, disadvantaged women, business enterprises, or registered small business enterprises, as the subject services will continue to be provided directly and exclusively by the existing contractor. Funding for this procurement is available in the agency's budget, which includes grant funds and 911 restricted operating funds. Purchase orders will only be issued against approved budgets. With that, Anthony and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there any board comment, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Wise?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item B.3. This is to approve letters of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration for participation in the Direct Payment Program in the amount of $102,837,781. And this is a wonderful program, and Gene Early is going to go through this with us. And Catherine Benson from the County Attorney's Office is also available in case you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Early?
Gene, you're muted. I thought I had unmuted it. I'm Gene Early. I'm Department Director for Healthcare Services. We're asking you to approve the letters of agreement with 40 Agency for Healthcare Administration for participation in our Direct Payment Program. It provides supplemental payments from the federal government to eligible hospitals, and as Bonnie pointed out, Medicaid managed care recipients in amount not to exceed $102,837,781. It also delegates authority to the county administrator to review, complete, and execute the attached IGT provider questionnaires requested by ACHA. And there's no funding requirement associated with the questionnaire. The required funding for the LOAs is participated to be collected from the hospitals pursuant to a forthcoming special assessment resolution as authorized by the Ordinance 22-15. The funds for these agreements are contingent upon approval of the proposed special assessment resolution and assessment role following a public hearing. A public amendment establishing these appropriations will come before the board at a future date after the agreements have been fully executed. And that's basically the extent of it for the Director Payment Program.
Thank you. Are there any other presentations for consideration by the board?
I'll move approvals.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
I am very glad to see this move forward, so thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B.4. This is to approve additional agreements with ACHA for the low-income pool disproportionate share for the IGT programs. And Gene Early will go through this one as well. And Commissioner White, my understanding is that you will be abstaining from this item.
That is correct. And I'll just state for the record that it's because of my employment relationship with Suncoast, and that's to avoid any potential conflict of interest. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, in this one, this is B.4, a request that you approve agreements with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, participation in the low-income pool disproportionate share and related intergovernmental transfer programs, which provide intergovernmental transfer to ACHA in the amount of not to exceed $35,312,911.53. It recognizes that the LIP programs are innovative and cost-effective programs under Section 212.055, paragraph four, for the Florida statutes. It delegates the authority to the county administrator to review, complete, and execute the attached IGT provider questionnaires for each participating entity requested by ACHA. The forms required by ACHA must be returned to the county, to ACHA, before October 1st, 2022, which is the submission deadline. There's no funding requirement associated with this questionnaire. The required funding for these IGT transfers is appropriated with the proposed FY23 Indigent Care Trust Fund. No additional funds are required. I would like to thank, basically, Bonnie Wise, our county administrator. I'd like to also recognize Debbie DeWitt, also our county attorney, and our, oh, excuse me, and Charlene Williams. And I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Any discussion by the board?
Move approval.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers.
Maybe we should slow this down.
Pardon me? And for the record, Commissioner White is going to abstain for this vote, so please indicate your vote.
Motion carried six to zero. Commissioner White abstained.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. I think we still have time for item F.1. This is Commissioner Hagan's item regarding the changing of dates for certain land use applications. And this is item F.1, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you. Yeah, this will be real brief. Apparently, on our last land use meeting on September 13th, there was a misunderstanding regarding the continuous dates of two applications that were set for December 13th but needed to be on November 3rd. The County Attorney's Office drafted this motion, and, you know, assuming it passes, the proper notice will be given, and to the neighbors as well as to the clerk's office. So with that, I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
So I'm going to just say thank you, everyone, for covering the things that we've gotten done, approved today. It was great to see the proclamations we had today. And I can ask Ms. Wise to bring us to our public hearing section so that we can address those time certants that begin within the next 10 seconds.
Well done. Perfect. There we go. The first public hearing is item D.1. This is a public hearing regarding the Northdale Special Dependant District. Whitney Green from the County Attorney's Office will take us through this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. Whitney Green, County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing to consider proposed revisions to Hillsborough County Ordinance 92-36 as amended to reduce the number of the district's trustees from nine to seven and modify the number of trustees necessary for a quorum to comply with state law. The amendment also includes an update reflecting the $160 per parcel special assessment that was recently approved by voter referendum. The board authorized scheduling and advertising this public hearing at your last board meeting, and all associated legal advertising requirements have been met. Mr. Thomas Murphy, who is the current president of the Northdale Special Tax District, is available virtually. I think I see him logged in. If the board has any questions of the district, and I'm available to answer any other questions that you may have. Again, this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you very much for that presentation. This is a public hearing. I do not have anyone that's signed up to speak to this item. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak to item D.1? We have, I'll close the public hearing, I have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next public hearing is item D.2, and there is now somebody who has signed up to speak for that. This is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement for Fishhawk West Investments for a school concurrency. Adam Gormley will take us through this item.
Mr. Gormley, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D.2 is a school concurrency proportionate share development mitigation agreement amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Fishhawk West Investments LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed Hawksfern Phase IV project, which consists of 25 single-family detached dwellings. The agreement calls for a payment of $151,544 to construct four high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of this project. And the student stations will be constructed at high school U-U-U located on the west side of West, I'm sorry, east side of Westlake Drive, south of 674 in Wyomama. This is the first of two public hearings, and the second public hearing will be held on October 6th at 10:00 a.m. It's a public hearing. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. As he indicated, this is a public hearing. We have an opportunity for anyone that has signed up to speak on this item available. I do have one person that's signed up to speak to item D.2. That's John Perez, who apparently is here in person. If you would like to speak, sir, please come to the podium.
Yeah, I kind of think I'm here on maybe the wrong thing. It's not what I expected. I was actually here to talk about the development that was going to be done on this property, so I guess I'm here at the wrong hearing. So I don't know, as far as with this school thing, I don't have anything to say about that. I just wanted to talk about the development itself. Is there something that does happen? I mean, if they showed, you know, the formation of this development, how it's going to be laid out?
You're welcome to speak on any topic you wish to speak on regarding this item.
I just wanted to talk about the way it is laid out. I am happy with it as far as, because I butt up to the back end of that parcel. And, of course, when I moved in there, it was a rural, one house per acre. Things change. You can't stop, you know, progress. But the way it's laid out right now, I'm not unhappy with it, where that first home is on the southwest. Be nice to see that as a single-story home, of course, because the way they raise the level of these homes, and a privacy fence doesn't cover these two-story homes anymore. But that's why I'm here. I thought maybe, I just wanted to make my voice heard, to make them aware of my property, and just in case they decide to change the layout. And that's one thing I wanted to say.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm going to recommend that Mr. Gormley reaches out to you to help you understand the land use process, to see if there's an opportunity for that conversation, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, sir. Commissioner White?
Hi, sir. Oh, never mind. I see that-
They got you.
We're getting his contact information.
I see that Charlene's gotten with him. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today. It's always helpful when the public comes to bring things to our attention, and we've benefited from that. With that, I'll, not seeing any other speakers, I'll close the public hearing and entertain the motion by Commissioner Cohen. Do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further comment.
Madam Chair, this action today is just to conduct a public hearing. The application will be structured for adoption at the October 6th hearing.
October 6th meeting. Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much. With that, please indicate your vote.
Madam Chair, I don't think, I think this was just a first reading.
So we don't have to vote on this?
There's no vote.
There's no vote. Right. So we're just hearing the hearing. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So we have withdrawn the two motions, and we'll just move on to the next item. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And the third public hearing, this is item D.3. This is a public hearing regarding the Community Investment Tax for Phase IV, and Kevin Bricki will present this item.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Item D.3 is a public hearing, and it is to receive public input and discuss modifying the approved list of projects for Phase IV, the Community Investment Tax, as described in the, and this was noticed in the Tampa Bay Times. Also asking you, after the public hearing, to adopt the CIT Phase IV Resolution, amending that approved list of projects. It would add 10 approved projects, two in the fire services area, two in the government facilities areas, and six in the parks areas. Each of these projects were included in the county administrator's FY23 recommended budget, CIP, and two of the projects are associated with funding that was added as part of the flagging process over the summer. These projects would be funded in the FY23-FY27 Capital Improvement Program. It would be appropriate to take public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we do have one person that has signed up to speak to item D.3 in this public hearing. Mr. Adahold, please join us at the podium. And for the record, we have the items that are being passed out to the board members.
Good morning again. For the record, Tom Adahold, Chair of the Veterans Memorial Park and Museum Board. There are two items on the list, CIT items, that particularly are a particular benefit to the park and the campus. And the handout that you have in front of you or soon will have of particular importance is the IMPACT, item 12, which we actually initiated in 2019, to a strategy to upgrade a lot of the park grounds and amenities within it. So you will see that two items on the list is Amphitheater Shade Sale, which keeps everybody in the shade when it's a blistering hot day, and it's important for two things. We host a lot of events on the campus, and everybody here has attended some of the patriotic events and commemorative events. But I'd like to get your attention moved down to item 16 on the list I gave you. In 2023, we'll begin to host national programs. By way of reference, JP Morgan Chase has a national program of carrying the load. It is a recognition fundraising for local nonprofits that support military and veterans around the country. They insist on their 2023 event being held in our park. I want you all to know that with all the great work that's being done and support, all from many, many stakeholders, our campus is gaining national recognition, and it'll continue to ramp up. So be very proud of the work being done out there, and you are the catalyst for that. The other is general enhancement of the park. There are a number of upgrades for the park. We have concentrated all our energies, and I say "we," I mean, everybody involved, the county administration, Board of County Commissioners, we have a lot of stakeholders involved, private funding sources and private funding sources. We've done yeoman's work, and it's only the beginning. I assure you, it's only the beginning. So we built a wonderful foundation. And I'll leave you with item number 18. 2023 Forward, we are doing nothing more than building synergistic relationships with a lot of stakeholders. As I mentioned earlier, the campus has literally evolved an ecosystem beyond imagination when it was founded, opened the doors, in 1986. Everybody's going to be very proud of what it's going to do for our entire area. Everybody's going to be very proud of what it's going to do for our entire area. With that, I encourage you to approve at least those two items on that list.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Adahold. And that shade did seem appropriate. I've sat on that front stage in the sun for lots of ceremonies, and it does get really hot. So I will certainly appreciate that addition and that improvement to the park. It is a jewel. I don't have anyone else that's signed up to speak. Do I have a motion by the board?
So move.
Second. A motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We can now move to the staff reports. The first one is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding zoning review, a future county surplus property sales. John Mueller will be here to present this along with Adam Gormley. They are both part of this discussion. And with that, we can turn it over to John and Adam.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'll ask HBD to put up my presentation. John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. With me today also is Adam Gormley, the Director of Development Services. Today's report is intended to give the board options to consider for staff to modify future procedures with regards of offering county surplus properties. Can I have next slide, please? Slide two. Yes, slide two, please. Thank you. So in the July 20th regular meeting, there was a request for our report, which included the elements of a review of entitlements on a surplus property that is proposed for sale, to prioritize and consider brokering the sale in-house first, and whether the request of the staff report could be incorporated as a staff direction or needs to be brought back as a board policy. When we arrive to that portion of the presentation, I have asked Rick Schontz with the county attorney's office to be available for questions on potential board policy. Slide number three, please. So currently, our surplus properties are really divided into two categories: bid sale and private sale. These terms are derived from Florida Statute 125.35, county authorization to sell real property. So private sales are, in general, smaller parcels which can't be built upon and are usable to those around to it. It could be larger, but in that case, it would be where the shape of the property is probably irregular. On the other hand, bid sales are properties that could be purchased and developed. Again, the difference between these two parcels is a bid sale is going to be able to receive a building permit. It is buildable, whereas private sale is not. Slide four, please. For the purposes of this brief and looking at zoning impacts, we would consider bid sales, or again, those properties that could be developed. Private sales, which are deemed unbuildable, are not suggested for additional review. On a bid sale surplus, the opportunity there for the further review directed by the board is beyond just the building permit standard. Development Services has suggested that their expanded review focus on three key areas: comprehensive planning and zoning entitlements, transportation and infrastructure, and natural resources. We foresee that the result of the further review would be an impact assessment. That being, any property recommended to be offered for sale would be presented along with this assessment. Development Services will identify deficient conditions if the property were to be developed, recommendation of any changes to the existing property zoning to mitigate the conditions, and lastly, any deficient conditions that could arise should the property be sold then rezoned. I'm going to ask Adam to please provide additional comments on his suggestions.
Thank you, John. Adam Gormley, Development Services. So Commissioners, what this review suggesting would be is similar to the one that was done for Kenan North. In that case, we did have a planned development zoning district. We're able to look at the site plan and the conditions in the developable area relative to the surrounding features and onsite features. We would propose to do a similar type review for planned development zonings and also for standard zonings. As you know, standard zonings can have a broad range of uses, and we would be looking at them with probably a wider view of the types of uses that might be included in there, plus the level of control over things such as access and advising the board on potential outcomes and recommending any changes to those current conditions in the event that we would identify a condition that we would not want to exist. That may result in zoning of property. In some cases, it might result in looking at whether property has a beneficial use to be put back into private production. I'm available for any questions on that type of review or any feedback the board may have on the past review or what we're proposing for standard operating procedure going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. I appreciate that report. I have some questions, but first I'm going to recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And that -- this presentation is just great work. It is a very clear presentation of the will of the board, as we all had discussed it together, and a very concise look at what the process is now and how we might improve upon it. And the idea is that when we are selling our own publicly owned property, we have a golden opportunity before that property goes into private hands to check how that property will develop. A lot of times, when we're presented in land use hearings with privately owned property, the owner is asking for things or maybe coming to us with old zoning, very old zoning sometimes that we would never have allowed now. But they already have those entitlements, and now they just want to tweak them around a little bit, and we can't take those old entitlements away or correct anything that was done according to old thinking, sometimes even environmentally detrimental things like the old zoning doesn't have the same setbacks from wetlands that we do now. Old zoning doesn't have the same consideration of traffic access. And plus, things have changed since the old zonings were granted, so that traffic patterns have changed, and a school has come up, and we see things, you know, today differently than before. But when a private landowner comes to us, we have to consider their property rights. We have to consider what they already have in a way to then figure out what's the best we can do given that. But when we own the property, before we sell it out to private interest, we have one chance to say, let's take a look at that zoning. And if it's some old zoning or if there's some old comp plan designation that is on there that is something we wouldn't do today in light of our current understanding and current situation, we have a moment to fix that before we hand it up. Also, we have a moment to say, consider whether we might put some zoning on there that would make the land more valuable before we sell it at a lower value to somebody who's going to come and get it or flip it or get it and then get it rezoned easily, some little island of low density in a higher density area. We could do that first and then take the value of it. So it could work both ways. And I think, again, our county staff working together, the real estate, the development services, and the county attorney have really come up with a good package of how to do this, along with that suggestion that I think Commissioner Kemp made before, that we should prioritize our own real estate department before -- to broker the sale of our property before we put together any deals using an outside broker, if possible. So that this whole package, I think, is a great explanation of all that, and I would like to make a motion to direct that staff, the real estate, development services, and county attorneys, and whoever else you need, to bring back a draft of board policy that would implement the procedures for county surplus property sales as described in this presentation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank staff for doing the outline and looking at the issues involved in this. But was there one final page that wasn't put up during that presentation that was part of the original?
May I be recognized to answer that question?
Yes.
I have two additional pages I'd like to finish, if I could.
Could we see those, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. So I'll just continue. Thank you. Slide five, please. So as was mentioned by Commissioner Smith, and it was actually part of our Kenan North partial agenda item, we are currently undergoing that with our -- we will first market properties and broker them in-house. You can see down below the items that we have to do with the preparation of the material. And then likewise, if the property doesn't sell, we're going to take a step and reevaluate it and then make board recommendations. It may not always be the case that we need to use a broker as the reason we didn't sell at our appraised price point, so we want to stop, evaluate, and check. However, if we do find and feel that a broker is definitely needed, we would propose to engage our procurement department services and then offer the opportunity to all. And then finally, if you could, please, my last slide. Lastly, you did ask us about policy versus administrative directive. So with regards to incorporating it, the understanding we have in consultation with the county attorney's office is really could be done either way. I have shown the current board policy language. Within the current policy, an administrative directive could be prepared, which can elaborate on all the specific requirements presented. Should the board direction be inclined to modify the existing policy? Of course, that's the board's pleasure. One consideration is that the framework for the assessment of the buildable service policies includes the, as a minimum, the potential impacts as we reviewed on, I believe it was slide three or four, for zoning entitlements, transportation, and natural resources. I did also ask Mr. Schontz to be here for your questions specific as to this slide as well. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about cutting -- I didn't mean to cut you short there. My apologies. But thank you for that presentation. Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, and those were two pages I was focused on, and before Commissioner Smith made her remarks, I wasn't sure what you were going to address, but I -- those two pages were pages that I had been focused on, as you acknowledged, in terms of the process. And I'll say at the end there, the last page, you may have noticed that the last time that at least a board policy was generated with regards to this was August 19th, 1981. So I'd say 40 years later, it's time for us to maybe look at this a little more closely, and circumstances and times have changed. And as we can see, too, it's a very sparse direction in terms of board policy. So I was -- I very much prefer it to be board policy because I think that that is rather than administrative. Not that I wouldn't trust the administration now to be doing the right things, but these things have a way of evolving over time when they're not set in policy like that. And I think it really generates a culture of doing this differently. And I know that when I first had talked about this process, and I said, what, is there a reason we're paying someone all this money to broker this deal when people are desperate to buy, apparently, you know, areas like this, acreage like this? And it seemed like it was very much initially to me set in stone that we needed to do it this way, and I thought there was legal constraints, some other things that might be there. But so I think it's very important to, at the top, in policy, change this for the future. So and I'll just say, I know that you made that in your motion. I know we have that language in the motion and the acknowledgement about the situations where we default first to our own department to do these sales. So I just wanted to kind of emphasize that point as well, and thank staff for the outline.
Thank you. I just have a quick question regarding the motion and to see if there's a possible need to add an item. In the presentation, what we saw is that there's a process for really looking at the property and potentially updating the comp plan and the zoning to be in line with our overall growth and the changes that we've made. There are provisions within the state statute that does permit county governments to actually update the -- for affordable housing or other types of emphasis to include making those changes prior to putting it out, to forbid. So it is very clear. But it also saves, I believe, taxpayer dollars in our process. If we're -- if we make those changes in line with our overall goals for the community, for community plans, for any of those issues, you know, we're looking at a bus emphasis corridor, we're looking at a housing element, we're looking at density bonuses as all pieces of our overall comprehensive plan amendment. And that process can be lengthy for a property owner that chooses to buy and develop this property. So my question is, does the opportunity for the county to make those comp plan and zoning changes prior to selling the property need to be included in the policy if it actually is supportive of the changes that we will be adopting, which we haven't yet done? That's why, for example, the comp plan, the density bonus, the bus emphasis corridor, those things, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we will. So for the motion maker, that will include a provision or a policy for allowing the board to make those changes prior to actually the RFP. Is that correct?
Correct, because, you know, any other changes we make after we adopt this policy would be looked at in that process. But, you know, excellent points about the kinds of things that we could look at, and we can expedite the zoning and comp plan change and get it done and get it out there. Yeah.
Yeah. When I'm still looking for units, like every day, so I'm like, anything we can do to expedite the process not only saves the county resources, but actually provides services possibly in a faster way. So that's what I was looking for. Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you're back in the queue.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I was looking at this in the narrow lens of the situation that we were in, in terms of the surplus properties and Commissioner Smith with the zoning and myself with kind of the process, bid process. And again, you, Commissioner Overman, have raised a little broader thing there, and I keep going back in my mind, and I think we have maybe locked this down and maybe in the future. I'll just say, it crosses some areas for me in terms of what we surplus, because I think that that was a process, and I'll say I still go back to this a lot. I was practically traumatized by it. But our attempt to sell the Upper Tampa Bay Trail to let a developer buy that park facility, basically, to put an apartment building on it and have 2,000 cars a day cross it. So what I'm, you know, it -- our comprehensive plan said our park properties were inviolate. That's the word that it used. But it seemed to not -- it, in terms of surplusing it, the inviolate didn't seem to be a part of it. But I'm thinking, and maybe our county attorney can address this a little, this would be more under the -- our surpressing property more under the -- our surpressing property kind of ordinance, whatever we have there. It's a look at something different when I raise these questions.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, it -- part of this can be addressed in the policy, but also, as you just said, in the ordinance.
Okay. You're saying in a different section?
In a different content. Right. Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. So we have -- I don't see any further comments. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Correct? And please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And the last staff report is item G2. This is to receive a report on the status of the rabbit education campaign. And Scott Trabatowsky will present this item.
Good afternoon. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to -- this is Scott Trabatowsky, Director of Pet Resources, to provide a brief update on our rabbit issue. I will share my presentation here. So when we did our awareness campaign, we said that we'd come back and let you know what specifically happened. About 80% of the stores were aware of the campaign, even though it was relatively short. It was probably within a month of Easter last year. The result was that 31% of the stores actually sold fewer rabbits. 54% sold about the same. And 15% said they sold more rabbits. We also looked at where are people getting rabbits that are ending up in the shelters? And there is a limited amount of data available, but with the data that we had, it's about 24%, about a quarter of the rabbits that are ending up in the shelter are coming from retail sales. And you'll see a broad list of other things of note. Very few, 2% only, were coming from feed stores since the sale there is mainly meant for agricultural purposes. The Humane Society had taken in 264 rabbits last year. For the first six months of this year, they had taken in 155 and turned away 54. The peak month of surrender post-Easter seems to be about two to three months around Junish. And in speaking with Sherri Silk, the Executive Director of the Humane Society, she anticipates bringing in over 300 rabbits this year. So even with the beginning of our long-term effort to educate, she still believes she's going to be taking in more rabbits. We brought this issue to the Animal Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, we still have not been able to garner a quorum, but we did put the group together just for a discussion. There really was no consensus of what direction to provide moving forward. The majority directed us to continue the education if we could. They all agreed that there's a concern. They just did not agree on how it -- how they thought it should be addressed. And they just asked that we be cautious about the impact on good pet owners and future farmers and the 4-H groups. Items for consideration, obviously, we would like to see the educational awareness program move forward because to be upfront with everybody, I learned a lot about rabbits this last year that I didn't know, and I thought I knew a fair amount on rabbits. So we -- things to consider, we can create ordinance for a permanent or seasonal ban or allow the retail sale of rabbits, but require them to be sterilized with the exclusion of feed stores. The benefits of the sterilization, it would prevent any kind of underage sales because no one's going to sterilize them, no veterinarian is going to sterilize them if they're that young. It also would reduce the cost of animals that end up in shelters because they would already be sterilized. The one thing I do want to bring to the attention of our viewing audience and some of the people who spoke today, I want to clarify the fact that the Hillsborough County pet retail sales ban does not per se ban the sale or placement of dogs and cats. It simply banned them coming from puppy mills and commercial. You can still, in this county, start a pet store or add cats and dogs to an existing pet store as long as they are sourced from rescues and shelters. And state law requires cats and dogs to be sterilized if they come from those sources where it would not be the same for rabbits. So options moving forward, if we were to stay consistent with our current pet sale ban, would be to ban the sale or adoption of unsterilized rabbits, provide and accept -- possibly provide an exception for feed stores because of agricultural purchases purposes. Allow retailers only to sell the rabbits that are received from rescue and shelter, which again parallels our dog and cat current legislation, and continue the awareness program. Obviously, this is a public policy issue. And I leave it to the board at this point.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. I appreciate that. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. And I had originally asked for this report and appreciate getting it back. I think the, if commissioners recall, the initial information we got some months ago wasn't as complete as it could have been in terms of recognizing what the problem and the issue was. And I appreciate that citizens brought so much more to the table on that to bring -- make us aware of, you know, the actual issues involved in this. Recently, there have been other counties, as they adopt pet retail sales bans with cats and dogs, they've added rabbits. And it's been done in Orange County, Duval, Key West. It's a growing issue, and it's been enacted now several times. And so with that in mind and with this report, I'd like to make a motion to move to direct staff to report back on different options from different Florida jurisdictions that we could use to regulate rabbit sales.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Myers, did you have? Okay. I am -- I'm going to support the motion because I would like to see the language. But I did want to ask a couple of questions just to see if in bringing the information back that we take into consideration some of the comments we got regarding the agricultural community. You know, I was curious, you know, can we ban, you know, pet rabbit and only provide the sale towards agricultural uses, which is either food production or for the animals that are actually used to feed other animals, but largely for agricultural purposes? And whether or not that would preclude the opportunity for our future farmers and our 4-H community? So I would want to make sure that we're reaching out to them to find out the methods that are being utilized by those two organizations that support our agricultural community and whether or not they're raising animals for pets or for food production. I think it's going to need to be clarified. But I, too, would agree that, you know, as long as it does, whatever it comes for doesn't interfere with the agricultural production that is necessary in our community, I think that it would be wise to direct the prohibition of retail sort of pet production that appears that the educational awareness program assisted in doing but did not solve the problem that we're seeing across the board. And at this point, I'd love to see that done. So we have a motion by -- I'm sorry, Commissioner Hagan, I'll recognize you.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll be real brief. I fully support the motion. I think I'm the one that, if you recall, championed our -- the pet retail sales ordinance in this direction, I think is consistent with how we handled that and that we received ordinances that were enacted in other communities and based it, assuming we were going to be legally challenged. So we based it on ordinances that had survived legal challenges, and that was a wise way to move forward. So I think this is consistent with that and makes a lot of sense. The one thing, though, I do put a lot of weight on our advisory board, the AEC. I would, ultimately, I would like them to weigh in on it other than not giving a recommendation. So I would be curious as to their thoughts. But in any event, I think this is the right direction, and I fully support the motion.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you all. And just for the record, and I think all this can be considered, but just for the record, I know that they continually don't get a quorum at the Animal Advisory Board, which is part of the problem, and it's been noted several times. So I'm not sure about the issues with that, but that's part of the problem.
And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Yeah, I would like for us to hear from the 4-H group and from the future farmers on this issue. What did they think of the banning of rabbits?
So specific instructions for staff to reach out to those, at least those two organizations to confirm that there was an opportunity to ensure and protect agricultural production as needed?
Absolutely.
I agree. I would not support that comment for staff. Thank you. Seeing any other further comments, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And now we are on to future discussion items.
All right. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. For some time, I have been reviewing our EMS ambulance system and the service that we're able to provide. And as our county has grown and some issues with that, our county fire rescue staff continues having to tie up our advanced service trucks and highly trained personnel with taking very basic level calls because our private vendors are not taking enough of those calls to free up our own fire rescue staff and equipment so that they can take the real serious emergency calls that they're trained and equipped to take. We're stretching this system very thin, and we need to figure out a better way to contract with the private basic life support BLS providers so that our advanced life support ALS professionals and equipment can be available for the real ALS calls. I've discussed this multiple times and again very recently with Chief Jones and with some of the fire rescue responders and union representatives, as well as with our administrator and administrative staff. And everyone agrees we have some serious issues here that need to be addressed. And so far, everyone I've talked to is all on board with me starting the process here today to get the ball rolling. So my item is to ask the fire chief to present to the board, along with whatever other staff supporting needs, a report on the EMS system and possible ways to improve response times in 90 to 120 days. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. I appreciate that. We do need to, I think, open the door to provide better services for our residents. And I appreciate that that effort will help us get there. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. First, we have to celebrate 10:45. I mean--
I know. How cool is that?
I hardly have to--
Thank you, county administrator.
Obviously, county staff needs more issues and work. So I decided that I'd just throw this in here. And it actually came up somewhat at our TPO meeting, and I've been considering it for a few years, but I didn't think the time was right. But now I think the time is right for us to maybe look at this and ask county staff to report back to us on this. It was brought to my attention a few years ago, and this is by someone who lived in the city of Tampa in multifamily housing. The parking garage, they had purchased an electric vehicle, and they wanted to be able to charge it in their parking garage in the evenings. And they were not able to do that because the parking garage wasn't wired to, not for their specific charge or anything they were going to do that, but it just didn't even have the carry within the garage to create what they needed for -- to do a charging station on their own. So they had retrofit. They were so committed to this that they retrofit the garage for their access to their -- the electricity and then put in their own charging station. But they first had to wire the garage itself. And I think at TPO, we listened to a presentation this week about all the substantial funding coming down through the federal government, through the various grants, looking, and I know we've all heard about infrastructure charging and how this will work out. But this had been brought to my attention as a specific need. And as we look to the future and we see this transition that seems to be just about to take place to electric vehicles, I'd like to see that in the county and maybe, I don't know if the city is independently looking at this or would, you know, could also benefit by this, but kind of look at the issues involved in having some kind of requirement in our multifamily new housing construction. Because as we all know, it's much easier to put it in in the first place than to retrofit it afterwards. But look at either full, part, something in terms of how the garage construction is done or the parking lot construction or whatever so that there would be some access to be able to then add charging systems in if that becomes something that's needed in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I had actually alluded to that in the area of when we were talking about resilience and the affordable housing space and ways that we could actually improve access to more efficient distribution of being able to allow individuals to move to more efficient use of their vehicles, but also access to it. Because frequently, if you have to drive down the street, it doesn't make any sense. So thank you very much for bringing that back. I have one item that I would like to get a staff report back and develop a strategy for addressing some of the major commitments that this county has made towards various different levels of programs. For example, you know, our tenant bill of rights, our social services, our eviction mitigation, home stabilization plans. We've rolled out some excellent programs over the last year without necessarily spending the same amount of energy to communicate to the public those resources. And I'd love to develop a sort of sole source, sole location type of approach to communicating to our residents how they get assistance in areas where we've invested in providing that assistance. So I'd love to get a report back from not only communications, but also our neighbor relations partners on getting that information out to our residents because I think it would be very valuable, since we spent the time developing the programs, that we give an easy way that our residents have access to them. So thank you very much. If we can bring that forward in the near future, I'd appreciate it. Any other future items with that? I think we're meeting adjourned. I think this is a record. I don't think we've ever done this quite that quickly. So thank you very much, everyone. So thank you very much, everyone.